Call the meeting to order. Carrie, is there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I need approval of the minutes of August 14, 2014. Is there any changes or corrections? I need to know those at this time. Is there a motion and second to approve? Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Council members in the audience that would like to come forward to the commission at this time, Councilmember Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Coming forward today, I've already spoken with you, and I know we're deferring 2014 S-170. We're going to be having a public meeting next Wednesday night at 6:00. And then we'd like to bring back to the commission, there's some connectivity issues and some things of that nature that I think our neighborhoods would like to have addressed. And there's, I think, some legitimate concerns. And so therefore, after the meeting, we'll be coming back and meeting with you. But I do appreciate you doing the deferral for us and allowing us to have this community meeting.
It's your call, and we're welcome.
Okay. And hopefully, we'll have somebody from planning there with us to kind of explain the issues. But we'll go forward, and then, like I said, bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay. You are requesting someone from staff to be there?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I've called, and we've spoken, and so we'll talk again tomorrow.
Okay. If there's a problem with the date, are you flexible on moving your date?
I can do that if there's a problem with that. We may need to ask for one more meeting deferral if we can't get the meeting for next week, because obviously, the 11th is coming up on us pretty rapidly. But if we can do that, then I would be fine. We'll adjust the schedule however we need to.
We'll defer at one meeting, and then if you can't have your meeting, then we defer at one more.
All right, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Any other council members in the audience that would like to speak? Councilwoman Dunn, how are you?
Hi. Good to see you. I'm Councilwoman Jacobia Dowell, and I'm here to speak on a planned unit development. I think it's item three on the agenda. I have sent a letter to each one of you on behalf of myself and members of our community. And I am asking you to consider declining this application request. I've spoken with the developer, and I think we're in agreement to handle this through an amendment where we can sit down and go through the process with the community to address the issues that neighbors have with regard to the modifications that are being made. Currently, this was approved with conditions by the Planning Commission, and, I mean, excuse me, the Planning Department, members of our community as well as myself. We don't think this is just a simple modification to the existing PUD, but it is actually really a change of use. As I stated in my letter, this place used to be a restaurant. Now we're moving it to a service-type business. Members of the community also are concerned about traffic congestion, the siding of where this business is. Currently, there's residential all around this space. And members of the community are very concerned about any adverse impact a business will have sighted on the corner with regard to living so close in proximity to it. I want to remind you that with regard to status is that you, as a commission, you have the option to consider and approve minor modifications to a previously approved planned unit development. So although it's been approved with conditions, you have the ability to direct this through the amendment process, as we have requested, and allow our community to go in and amend this PUD and have some input with regard to how we're using it.
You used the word decline a while ago. Do you want to turn it down, or you want to defer it?
What I would like for it to do, I would like to have it turned down. And I would like the developer to go through the amendment process where they asked to amend the PUD, because it is my belief that this is not a simple revision to the existing PUD. Right now, if you look at the area, it contains 75% residential around it. We have a senior housing complex that is directly behind it. On one side, we have an apartment complex, and on the other side, we have a long-term care facility. And with that being said, people in the community are concerned when we look at mixing business with residential. We need to do it in a way that complements. Now, on this, they've approved this with conditions as a revision. But this is not a revision. We're talking about constructing a new facility on the corner of a corridor in our community. So it's not just revising and putting a business in. You're talking about adding parking spaces. We're talking about a different use from the prior use. And so we ask that you don't consider this as a revision, but actually a modification to the existing PUD, and let us handle it through that process. So my request is to decline the application and allow us to go and amend the PUD so that we have an opportunity to have community meetings to address the change of use and all of that with this new business.
Can we get a clarification?
Yeah. What you have is, the request, the applicant's request is a revision to an existing PUD. The commission has the right under the ordinance to consider this as a revision, which would mean that the commission could approve that. The commission also has the right to consider it as an amendment to the PUD. An amendment would have to go to the council for review. And the basic criteria of difference is, do you think that the proposed change is fundamentally a change to the development concept of the PUD? So in either case, you would need a recommendation. If the commission went ahead and held the hearing and felt it was a revision, then that would stop here. If the commission had the hearing and either approved it or disapproved it as an amendment, it would go to the council for final action.
Thank you for that clarification. So what we're requesting is to allow us to address this through the council process. And in doing that, we will be able to host community meetings and work out an arrangement that best fits for both parties involved.
The applicant apparently has requested a deferral to allow this to be kind of worked out, so.
Okay. And I'm requesting a disapproval.
But I think we're better off for a deferral, because that gives you time to have your community meetings. If we're here today, I don't know how the commissioners vote. They may vote to.
Well, we're willing to look at a deferral, but the issue that we have and that we're presenting is that this is not a simple revision to a plan. If you look at the current use of this PUD, it's primarily retail in there, restaurants. Most of those close at a certain time. The parking space is there. We're not talking about just putting a new business into a commercial space. What we're talking about is bringing a new type of business use to that space. Additionally, we're talking about constructing a new business. We're building something new in the community. And it will impact the PUD, because the PUD right now is primarily retail. This is where people go to shop. They're not conducting financial transactions there. So, you know, those elements are concerned, you know, with existing traffic impact on there, from what we have now to adding something new. So we believe that it's not a simple revision, and we've had conversations about it before.
I would think a deferral is in your best interest, so you have time then to go back to the community and to the developer and try to work that out. If the developer sees that the community doesn't want that, and it's probably not going to pass, they may be more prone to go back to something they do want.
Right. Well, I'm willing to accept a three-meeting deferral. I actually have something coming up the next time, so we could do three meetings that will give us time to align something.
Is the applicant in the audience today? It'd be your call, since you're the applicant. I mean, we can defer. We have it right. But are you okay with a deferral?
Yes, we are. And we'd like to try and do two if we can, if it will work better. But if we had to do three, we can do that.
Okay. And I think a deferral is in your best interest, so we'll put that on a deferral for the day, if it's okay with both sides.
It's fine. I would like it to be three meetings, because I have something.
Okay. If that's what we need to do.
That'll be the first meeting in October.
Yes.
Three meetings.
Yes.
I don't know the date, but it'll be the first commission meeting in October.
Yeah.
We'll put that on, Carrie, put that on the deferral list, too. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Banks?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. How are you all doing?
Great.
Good. Just coming to comment on the Church Street development that's happening. It's item 2014 SP-046-001. Simply put, I just wanted to make sure that I registered what I believe are the concerns of the community when it comes to this item. We held a number of community meetings, four to be exact. And through those meetings, of course, there were changes from the initial proposal by the applicant. And of course, things have changed a little bit, but the density is still there. It's 6.9, 6.7. And I think the concerns are that maybe the density is not quite where it needs to be. I think they also are concerned about traffic congestion, just because we have a number of developments that have happened on the north side of Cloverland with the Seven Springs PUD. So you have a number of concerns there. Just want to make sure everybody knows, everybody on the page with us, I know you all are looking around. So I wanted to make sure those were registered. I think those concerns will be represented by others who are making comments tonight, who are here from the community, because they wanted to make sure they were heard. I understand we're going to have a presenter from the applicant, too. So I want to make sure that we have everybody here and heard. But I'll let the residents speak for themselves in that regard. And then, of course, we'll see, we'll wait and see what kind of decision might come from the commission moving forward. I understand the planning staff is not going to recommend approval, so I hope you will pay attention to that and that we might be able to ask some serious questions about what we might do moving forward. So just want to make sure I registered those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other councilmen in the audience that I overlook? We're going to have a Nashville Next update. Carrie, our monitor's going to be on. We're working on it. Okay. Go ahead.
Siri not available. The internet.
Thought I turned it off. It happens to me a lot. Having to church was something.
Do you want to try to get it working? I can go with that. Is there someone?
You can go ahead. I don't need to.
I can go ahead and start without the presentation. Good evening, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Greg Claxton with the Planning Department. I'm here to give you your Nashville Next update, and I'll be talking about what the Economic and Workforce Development Resource Team has been working on for the past year and a half or so. As you recall, we have seven planned elements that the Nashville Next Plan is addressing. Economic development is one of those. Each one of those elements has a team of local experts and stakeholders that we've engaged for the past year and a half to help identify a few things. First is help our steering committee and our community understand trends that Nashville must respond to over the next 25 years. Second is to develop goals, policies, and actions to take the community forward into the future. Third is to understand the impacts of land use, transportation, and infrastructure on economic and workforce development, and vice versa. And then the last is we hope that after the plan is adopted, they will continue to work with us and with Metro to implement the plan. I want to start by talking through the two related issues in this plan, in this resource team. The first is economic development. The reason, you know, kind of, the key reason, the two key reasons that we do economic development. First is throughout the Nashville Next process, we've looked at the impact of, you know, the built environment on Metro's fiscal capacity, how well we're able to financially maintain Metro based on how we build out. Commercial development is a crucial component of our tax base. If you'll recall seeing our presentations from earlier, looking at, you know, kind of the tax productivity of different parts of the county, how much tax revenue they yield per acre. You know, downtown is the big spike. Green Hills, Midtown, you know, other areas show up as well. And the commercial component of that, mixing with residential, is a key part. The second factor that's critical is that economic development helps to grow our job base and provide jobs for Nashville residents. And that gets to the second part of the team, the workforce development side. Over the next 25 years, one of the key trends that we're looking at is changes in what kind of job, the kind of skills that are needed for the jobs that are being created in the future. Right now, most jobs in the county require a minimal level of experience and skills. Over the next 25 years, we expect an increasing number of jobs to require college degrees, advanced degrees, more experience, and more skills. And so one of the things we want to do is help prepare our workforce, our residents, for those jobs. That connects back to economic development, because having a talented workforce, you know, having people ready with those skills is another thing that helps companies expand here, start here, or move here. And so we need to work both of these together. All right. One of the key issues that's come up through this resource team that kind of frames how we look at this, how we connect this to how we grow into the future, is this idea that we call investment-ready places. Here, the idea is that we need to meet the diverse needs of different kinds of businesses, as well as in find where those businesses can locate throughout the county in a way that allows them the development rights to create and sustain their businesses, that in places that have infrastructure and in places that have community and political support. One of our partners on the resource team and on our steering committee is the Chamber of Commerce. And in discussions with them, one of the things we've talked about, you know, one of the issues that they've been working on is, you know, over the past five or 10 years, we've had a number of kind of big issues that we've grappled with, you know, locations like Bell's Bend or the Fairgrounds, where, you know, we, as a community, have decided, no, those shouldn't be open for additional development. And so one of the things that we want to use this process for is figure out where we say yes. Where do we want to focus our efforts from a, you know, entitlement perspective, from an infrastructure perspective? And where can they focus their efforts on economic development, recruitment, and expansion? And how does that connect to workforce that needs to access these jobs? Another part of the concern that's been throughout Nashville Next is understanding the regional aspect of economic and workforce development, because we are very much one part of a much broader regional economy, understanding that different businesses, different kinds of businesses locate, are looking for different things from Davidson County versus Wilson or Williamson Counties. And they're going to locate differently. And that's going to pose some transportation issues. It's going to pose some traffic issues in the future and now. And it's going to pose some quality of life issues. And understanding kind of how we balance regional economic development with regional transportation investment is a big part of what we're looking to do. Last, on the kind of the more individual worker side of things, we want to help people kind of sustain themselves, sustain their families, and understand kind of the opportunities that are available. This is an example from Goodwill Industries, how they talk to their clients about career opportunities, that, you know, there's kind of a career ladder from entry-level jobs to higher-level jobs. And the nature of the skills that are required changes. So it's, one of the nice things has been working with the workforce development folks and the economic development folks to understand how these connect and how, you know, there's a lot of alignment there, but there are some places that aren't aligned, because they don't necessarily need to be. And so we've looked at kind of the target industries from the Chamber, Entrepreneur Center, many different workforce development agencies, and then even down to the academies of Nashville. We're starting to look at, for example, the Nashville State Community College to see how they play a role in this. So the draft goals and policies for economic and workforce development, which are currently out for review by the community through our lounges and online. The first one is, you know, a broader statement. We want to have a vibrant economy. We want to recognize that the diversity of our economy has been a strength. We saw that very much during this past recession. Recognize the range of businesses that we're talking about, not just large businesses, but mid-sized, small businesses, and entrepreneurs as well. This is the goal, where we talk about those investment-ready places, support for entrepreneurs, you know, kind of how we find the next sector of the economy that's going to add to our job base. Our second goal is looking at the impact of our economy on our businesses, on quality of life, and where the opportunities for businesses are throughout the county. In particular, a key thing here is parts of the county that don't have the retail and services and business opportunities that they would like to have. And what are the tools that we have to increase business investment in those places? And how are the ways that we kind of have a high quality of life through our local businesses? How does that serve our existing residents, and how can that help to attract new residents? The last part is the workforce development piece, you know, really looking at how we match skills that are needed by today's employers, as well as the shift in to higher-skill work that we're expecting, how we match that to our current workforce? And what are the sources that we have for, you know, improving our base of talent? The last thing that I want to note is, on September 29th, we don't have a location yet, but on September 29th, we're going to have a community conversation about economic development and really get into some of the details with the community of some of the trade-offs in terms of the areas that we prioritize for new job growth, how people get to those places, and how that supports quality of life. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Greg. Carrie, items to be deferred or withdrawn?
There are two items for deferral. The first item is item number three on your agenda. That's, the case number is 15877P004 Hickory Hollow Retail. It's on page six of your agenda. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Hickory Hollow Retail Commercial Planned Unit Development Overlay District for property located at 771 Bell Road, zoned R8, to permit the development of a 1,500-square-foot check-cashing facility where 7,500-square-foot restaurant was previously approved. And the staff recommendation is to defer to the October 9, 2014 Planning Commission meeting at the request of the applicant. The next item is item number eight on page seven of your agenda. That's 2014 S-170001, the Earhart Road subdivision. This is a request for concept plan approval to create 49 clustered lots and open space on properties located at 3110, 3112, and 3114 Earhart Road, and 5545 Chestnut Wood Trail, zoned RS15. The staff recommendation is to defer to September 11, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Item three? Should we do three?
First. Number three first.
Yeah, that was, item three deferred to October 9. And item eight was deferred to what date?
September 11.
September 11. Okay. Okay, Commissioners, you've heard the request to defer items three and eight. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those have been deferred, and we are ready for any items to be approved on consent.
First, I'll read a legal notice as information for our audience. If you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. The items on the consent agenda, as noted to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is item number two. It's on page five of your agenda. It's 2014 SP-053001, 56th and Pennsylvania. It's a request to rezone from R6 to SPR zoning for properties located at 5602 Pennsylvania Avenue to permit up to nine residential dwelling units. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number four on your agenda, page six, is 17883P001 Charlotte Center. It's a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Charlotte Center Commercial PUD Overlay District for property located at 3710 Annex Avenue, Zone CS, to revise the mix of permitted land uses. And staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including updated conditions of approval from Public Works that are at your desk. Item number five on page six of your agenda is 2014 161001 Ackland and Murphy. It's a request for concept plan approval to create eight lots within the Richland West End Edition Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District on property located at Murphy Road unnumbered, Zone R6. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a variance from Section 3-42F1 of the subdivision regulations. Item number six, also on page six of your agenda, is 2014 S-136001 Harbertown Village First Revision Reserve Parcel. It's a request for final plat approval to remove the reserve status and create one lot on property located at 3320 Anderson Road, zoned R10. The staff recommendation is to approve. Item number seven, on page seven of your agenda, is 2014 S-163001 West End Annex Resub of Lots 3 and 4. It's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on properties located at 4202 Murphy Road, zoned RS7.5. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Under Other Business, on page seven, we have item number nine, a new employee contract for Mary Connolly. Item 10, a certification of compliance with the DTC's bonus height program for 205 Demumbrian Street. Item number 11, an amendment to the grant contract between TDOT and the Nashville Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO to reflect an increase in grant budget amount. Number 12, a contract between MPC on behalf of MPO and Nashville MTA for assistance in carrying out regional planning activities as described in the adopted federal fiscal years 2014, 2015 UFI Planning Work Program. And item number 16, to accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Thank you, Carrie. Commissioners, items that have been requested to be on consent, voted on at one time, items number two, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 16. Is there a motion? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items have now officially been approved. For the audience, there'd be one item on public hearing today that is item number one, which is Church Street Townhomes. All other business has been taken care of. Jason?
Item one is a zoning request for Church Street Townhomes. The properties are outlined in red. This consists of several different properties and portions of properties. This is just to the east of I-65, south of Old Hickory Boulevard, and just to the north of the county line and Brentwood. The request is rezone approximately 17 acres from two-family residential R40 to specific plan mixed residential to permit up to 118 residential units. This is a closer view of the site. Staff is recommending disapproval of the request. The current zoning is two-family residential. It permit a maximum of 23 units, which would consist of 19 lots, and they would also permit four duplex lots. This is the proposed plan for 118 units, approximately six units per acre. It consists of five product types. I'm going to go through each product type, and you will see they're outlined as I go through them. So the first, or 33, are their 30-foot front-loaded townhome product. Those are located internal. These are all front-loaded, again, and would have access on the public streets. The next is 24 alley-loaded units, which are located internally to the site. The ones to the east would have some frontage onto open space, and some would also front onto the street, as well as the ones to the west would front on the street, and all would have access by the rear through an alley. The next product type are units along Church Street, which are a townhome-type unit. These are attached, and there would be 28 of these units. Along Cloverland, they have five detached units. These are intended to, they would have dual frontage, so the fronts along Cloverland would appear to be the front of the building, however, they would be fronting internally into the development. The last 15 products are front-loaded units. These units are accessed by a private drive. These units are accessed by a private drive which loops off of the public road. The main access into the development will be from Two Points onto Church Street. All of these will be public streets. The maximum height on all the units would be three stories at 45 feet. Along Church Street and along Cloverland, there are approximately a 30-foot front setback. Parking is parked at about 2.1 spaces per unit, so a total of 256 spaces. The right-of-way is approximately 46 feet, so that would not permit on-street parking. Buffer yards are proposed along the northern property boundaries. They're calling for a B1 buffer, which is approximately 20 feet in width. The next few slides go through some of the product types. I think the applicants also have a more detailed presentation to go through these products, but this includes the 24-foot products, which you can see, they're outlined in red. So this is the townhomes along Church Street, as well as some internal rear-loaded products. This is the 30-foot product for single-family attached dwellings, and this is units that are all internal and are front-loaded. And this is a view of the home that would be along Church Street. And again, these are conceptual drawings. This is, the policy for this is suburban neighborhood maintenance. This policy is intended primarily to preserve the character of an area. It recognizes that change will occur, but change should be in keeping with the general characteristics of the area. There is also a conservation policy, which was not noted in your staff report, which follows a stream that bisects the property. There was a stormwater variance granted by the Stormwater Management Committee that permitted a crossing for the public road, as well as some buffer disturbances in some of the areas. Staff doesn't find that this request is consistent with the land use policy. Specifically, we have design concerns. We don't feel that this provides an appropriate transition from west to east. If you go back, if I go back, you can see that the development pattern to the east, immediately to the east is a lot larger lots. These lots also have very deep setbacks. And when you go to the plan, you have more of an urban design along Church Street with the attached units, and you also have very shallow setbacks, which is not consistent with just the development pattern just to the east. There are also the product types that are front-loaded. You would have numerous curb cuts, which conflict with pedestrian movements, and so we feel that this is not appropriate, given this type of design. And the applicant has worked, we've been working with the applicant for a while, and they have made numerous changes, hoping that we could come to something that we felt worked with the policy. At the end of the day, we feel that the product type, that they have a specific product type, and they don't have much flexibility on that, that this product type just does not work very well with this particular piece of property. So in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval, as the request is not consistent with the land use policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Excuse me. Items open to public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and you may keep two back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Members of the commission, my name is Jeff Hines with Little John Engineering Associates, and we would like to preserve two minutes for rebuttal at the end. And I appreciate Jason's comment, because we have worked diligently with staff and at one point hoped we might stand before you with a consensus on all grounds. But in the end, I think we need to respectfully disagree with the conclusion that was reached, and I'm going to suggest several areas of why we believe that, and there's some slides to support that. We believe that the plan does comply with the policy in areas of land use, compatibility, density, and architectural compatibility. And Jason, if you could call up my slides and go to the second one.
Go ahead, if you would, because time's...
Well, on this slide, you'll see in two different colors, the blue being apartments, which immediately abut our site on the western boundary, and you'll see in the purple color all housing within this area that is both attached, small cottage homes, as well as attached townhomes. And in looking at our site, I think Jason was corrected immediately across the street, we have a residential lot that is deeper, but if you look at the area as a whole, we have quite a bit of attached housing. Would you go to my next slide? This also looks at a density comparison throughout the area, and the proposal that we had before you at 6.7 dwelling units to the acre. To the west of us ranges everything from 18, which is what the apartments are at, immediately adjacent, with a 20-foot-high wall abutting this property, to 15 to the northwest, one immediately to the north, but then you have 6, 4, and 10 further to the north. And over in the Fredericksburg development off of Cloverland, you have 2.2 units to the acre, but effectively, the design of those lots is five units to the acre, because the lots are .17 acres. So if you average all those densities, basically what you end up with is between 6 and 7 units to the acre. If you'd go to my next slide. In the plan we had before you, I would point out a couple things as far as a site constraint. We have 80-foot of fall across this property from the western boundary abutting the apartments down to the stream area that bisects through the center of the site. We also have 30-foot of fall from the Church Street frontage to the northern property boundary. So we have some challenges here. This site is not one that you can put a flat development proposal on it and have rear-loaded alleys everywhere. What we have done is have a circular street that basically connects the community with Two Points of Egress back on the Church Street. We heard that from the neighborhood, that they were very sensitive to bringing the traffic paddock out to Church Street, and there are proposed improvements at the intersection of Church and Cloverland. But then what we have from there is where the topo allows and supports doing tuck-under garages, which are the red and the blue units in this plan, we have done that. Where the topo rises from that road, which are the green and the yellow mustard-colored units, we have gone with a front garage product, because basically, a rear-loaded alley is penalizing us in terms of the topography there, and would mean larger, taller walls in the rear of these units. So we think the site is somewhat unique, and the topography must be taken into account. The units along Cloverland, the five units there, were basically to address the single-family homes on the opposite side, and are freestanding units. The traffic circulation garage access would be internal to the development, but they would have front porches and such. Along Cloverland, there is no on-street parking allowed on Cloverland, so really, the fronts there wouldn't support visitors. They need the internal parking. Next slide, please. Looking at circulation and walkability, I think is one thing we work hard with staff. And you see a sidewalk pattern here, but you also see some green areas of neighborhood parks, of small vest-pocket parks where we introduce green space into this. It is a townhome product which transitions the topo well, but if designed well within a neighborhood and introduces those green pockets, we believe that is a good design that meets the overall needs of the neighborhood. If you'd go again. Here's a little, we did some charrette studies and presented this to staff, of the character of each of these areas. I just include that to show you. Main thing to mention is the intersection of Cloverland and Church. We have done a little community monumentation element there, which does respect the nature of that intersection being a major traffic area. So we have addressed that and given a feel to the community. Next slide, please. And we have a representative here from Pulte Homes, which would be the ultimate builder in this community, and he is going to speak to the character of the units. Matt?
Good evening. As Jeff mentioned, my name is Matt Williams, and I represent Pulte Homes, who will be the end user of the property. And given some of the site constraints and information Jeff's given you about the site plan, I'd like to share with you the product that we propose for this plan. As I look through our records, it seems we had a longstanding relationship with Metro. Since 2000, we've built around 750 homes here in Metro, and 50% of those homes have been townhomes, similar to the product we're looking at doing on this site. If you go to the next slide. The first product I want to talk to you about is our 30-foot townhome. These townhomes are a two-story townhome that feature a master on the main. The good thing about this product is it meets a desire for an active adult buyer that we find in this area in a five-mile radius. About 39% of the residents in this area are 45 to 65 years of age. So this product lives well for them with a master down, gives them the ability to downsize out of their larger home, and enjoy an active lifestyle without having a lot to maintain. Next slide, please. These are designed, as I said, for 45 years and older, and they will be priced in the mid-400s. And as you can see from the next slides, they have nice interiors with open floor plans, available upgrades, and with some quality finishes. The next couple of slides there, Jason. Kitchens with granite countertops, stainless appliances, and you can see even the living room and family rooms have tray ceilings with even coffer ceilings on the inside. So even with this product, knowing that the driveways do face to the front, we've worked with staff on an area to address that concern, and put some nice landscape-planted buffers between the main street and the units themselves. We'll get the next one there, Jason. So as you can see, we've kind of masked in the drives. As you drive through the neighborhood, you don't see the garages in the driveways. And as we go through the next couple of slides, you'll see we've got single-family along Cloverland. The same 30-footers, we're breaking them apart to give you a single-family feel to help with the transition of the neighborhood, and they'll be in the high 400s. Same interiors with the coffer ceilings and nice luxury options that the buyers can choose View of the family room there, and same kitchens. The unique product we're offering along Church Street, to kind of break up some of the massing, is a three-story townhome that will only have two stories visible from Church Street. So what you see on the next slide is a closer view of the product, where you only see two stories as you drive down Church Street, and the three stories in the rear, to kind of help with the transition as you make the way down Church Street. The next few slides will show you the three-story product that'll be on the interior. Same product, driveways in the rear, alley-loaded to help promote walkability through the neighborhood. These are typically for buyers who are anywhere from 25 to 34 years of age, and typically don't have children at this stage of life. And the next few slides will show you the interiors of these units. Same style, these will be in the mid-300s, but the interiors are open with quality finishes such as granite countertops, hardwood flooring, and transaction prices hopefully in around the 350 to high 3s. So this is a little bit about the demographics of the area, with the consumers we want to serve, 19% at the young age, we call them dual-income, no kids, 39% the active adults. So just kind of give you a little oversight of why we feel the product's the best fit for the neighborhood. And I'll reserve the rest of the time for Mr. White to come and address any of his concerns.
We're good.
You have one minute left to rebuttal.
Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
I am Robert Shelton, and my wife is Loretta Shelton. Have lived at 552 Church Street East for over 40 years. And I am a retiree, also my wife. And we would like to see this project be developed, and we like to update our living, and not because of our seller, but we just like to be in some time of life to know that we are living at our age. And so I'd just like to say that we have some issues. I've been in four of the neighborhood meetings, and one of the issues that they were saying that the water, had floodwater down Church Street East. And over 40 years that I've lived there, which is sort of a dish behind my home, we was never flooded in water. And in 2010, we was there, and know so many homes that was flooded here in the city, but we was not flooded in our home. We thank you so much, and hoping that it will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, please. Anyone else wishing to speak in support, if you line up at the microphone and save us some time?
Good evening, panel. My name is Loretta Shelton. I'm the spouse of Robert Shelton. I drove him at your school bus for 34 years. Church Street used to be Hardscuff Road. I didn't like Hardscuff Road, so I got Mr. One of our councilmen to approve to name it Church Street East, because Maryland Way used to be, in the day, Church Street West. And I asked him, I said, "Why can't we be Church Street East?" Because I never did like Hardscuff Road. I said, "This to say this. Are y'all discriminating against us? Because, you know, we the only family right now that lives right there on Church Street East. Everybody else is gone. We's from countryside. They have built all business. We the only single home on Church Street East." Another thing I want to say, we sit there and watch people when it rain. They walk in the grass. We don't have no sidewalks. All the property, vacant property around us, growing up, and guess who are habitating that? The cowards, and those big old cats. They come around, and they kill everything in the neighborhood. I would rather see that happen than to see it grow up in a jungle, tell the truth. And we need sidewalks. Wouldn't it look better than it all growed up in trees? And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
First of all, I appreciate very much the privilege of addressing the council today, and I also came to request approval of the plan. I own the property at 5689 Cloverland Drive, and I've owned it since 1979. It's approximately 1 and 3/4 acre. I raised both of my children there, and they're all married and gone from home and everything. But since I heard about this plan to develop the neighborhood and everything, I've always felt that it is in keeping with the present trend of development in the neighborhood, and I felt that it definitely will improve the appearance of the neighborhood, because up until now, most of the development in Brentwood has been on the west side of the interstate, and very little has been on the east side. Also, I can't see how it won't improve the property values. I mean, I know some people may be opposed to it, because they thought that, you know, that the project would hurt their property value. So since I've heard about the plan, I've been in favor of it, and if something happens that you don't see fit to approve it, then I wouldn't mind going back and living there, you know, again. But I've always been in favor of it, and I appreciate very much the privilege today of coming and addressing the council. Thank you very much.
Please state your name.
Don Branham.
Okay. Thank you.
And I own the property at 5689 Cloverland.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Others wishing to speak in support?
My name is Catherine Santa Stevan, and I am one of the owners at 529 Church Street East. It's approximately 18 acres there on the corner, and my parents lived across the street from a Loretta Shelton, and they had lived there for maybe 30 years. And what's happened in that area now is there are vacant lots there, people are going over there and parking and committing crimes. We've asked to be on police watch. They've gone into the home and stolen everything, doors, copper, anything that could possibly be of any value. It doesn't matter who we go and talk to or complain to, but if it stays in the shape that it's in right now, you're just asking for more crime in that area. And we feel like that if they do this project that's proposed, there'll be sidewalks, there'll be more people visible, there will be maybe more of a neighborhood watch in that area. We know that we abut Annandale. It's a very nice area, and the property that my, you know, that we have is something that could go several different ways. But our view on it is that we feel like that this would be something that would be compliant with the neighborhood. with the neighborhood. And I just wanted to say that, you know, we appreciate you listening to what we had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If you come to the microphone, anyone wishing to speak, go ahead and line up behind each other at the microphone and save some time between people talking, and it'll get the commissioners home a little easier.
This wouldn't be my first choice. My husband has been speaking with Jason.
Say your name, please.
I'm Ruth Ann Blackwood, and my husband, Friday Charles, has been emailing most of the neighborhood. I don't think any of us are opposed in general to the development. Most of the opposition has been to the density. Most of the neighborhood is in favor of four units per acre that we have spoken to. The gentleman, when he was speaking of Fredericksburg, the one thing that caught my attention was, if you look at Fredericksburg, it's a very large development. The overall units may be that, but there is a significant portion of Fredericksburg that is four units per acre. Then along Old Hickory Boulevard, which is such a busy commercial street, they have developed some townhomes and some smaller units. This piece of property is much smaller, so they don't have the opportunity to make as much of a break between the neighborhood. The other thing my husband was wanting to make aware was the signage on Church Street has been down since a week ago Wednesday for the notification for the planning commission, and he was concerned that there might be some people that were not aware of the public hearing today because the signing had fallen. So it's been down over a week. The traffic on Church Street, if you try to start coming home from Maryland Farms in the afternoons, I don't go that way much in the morning, but I know starting at 3:30 or 4:00 in the afternoon, it is backed up past those apartments to the red light, and I cannot see how we can put that many more cars on the street. I don't know how they would get out of their drives from the development. You know, it's a nice area, and we would love for the homeowners to have an opportunity to develop their property. We don't have an opposition to their right to make the most of the value that they have, but we think it needs to be in keeping with what's in the neighborhood.
Hi, Amy Greer. I live at 5801 Cloverland Drive. It's in a neighborhood called Cloverland Acres, probably a little less than a mile from the proposed development, practically walking distance. I can agree with the previous speaker. Church Street is practically a parking lot. My children's daycare is three miles from my house every afternoon. It's a thirty-to-forty-five-minute drive. Without traffic, it's under ten minutes. I think the biggest concern of our neighborhood and myself is traffic, the density levels. I think everyone I've spoken to and myself personally, we are strongly in favor of a nice development going in there. I think we would be more comfortable in a three-to-four units because that would, just driving through the area, match kind of the feel of the rest of the area. I would question the statement that the average is six to seven per acre because the diagram that was shown earlier regarding the surrounding neighborhoods excluded all of the properties to the southeast of this development, which includes Davidson County properties like my own. My property was excluded from that diagram, and we're at one unit an acre. So I think if you started to include Cloverland Acres in that calculation, six to seven average is not accurate. But once again, it's really just a major traffic concern. There's additional developments going in, not just Davidson County, but Williamson County. Probably within a mile and a half of this, in Williamson County, there is three-hundred-and-fifty condominiums going in. All that traffic is going to dump out directly on a Church Street, so that's just going to be another burden. But once again, you know, I think our neighborhood would love to see a development, love for the landowners to see that happen. It's just a density concern at this point.
Hello, my name's Chad. Hi, I'm at 5652 Valley View Road. And nothing I will say, you're not going to hear from our neighbors, but traffic concerns, stormwater issues. But my son Lawton's a fourth grader at Granbury, and I wanted him to participate in the democratic process, and he's also on the debate team. And so he wrote a speech all on his own today at school. I'd edit it, and he'd like to read that to you.
I have a few reasons why I don't want the development. Number one, the environment. There are deer, squirrels, owls, endangered caudads, skunks, and coyotes in that land. There are hundreds of trees back there, too. Those animals visit our house. It's really neat. If you develop back there, all those animals wouldn't have a home. Do you want someone to move into your home and it isn't your fault? An owl lives in our backyard, and he's really happy. Number two, traffic. Traffic is already heavy. We sometimes are stuck at lights for almost five minutes. My dad may not be able to get to school on time. Number three, school. Right now, my school, Granbury, is building new classrooms because we have too many portables. If all the kids who would live in those homes went to Granbury, we would have to build more. Those are some of the reasons why I don't want development.
Hi, that's a tough act to follow. My name is Paul Ryder, and I live at 5672 and 5680 Cloverland. I'm on the east side of the street, and I own about five acres. That's about a third of what the development's size is. On that property, we have two houses. One is our main house, another is a rental house, which we have luckily been living in while we remodeled our main house. And to date, we've lived there for two years. In that time, I've invested about a million dollars. I would not have done that if I'd have known that we were going to get the squeeze from both ends of Cloverland Drive. Now Cloverland Drive and that neighborhood is a very old neighborhood. My house was built in 1945, which is why we had to remodel it, because it wasn't up to code. As such, the trees are old, the houses are old, the lots are big on the east side of the street. And my property is where the two streams converge very nicely in waterfalls. So the front of my yard is like a park, big, huge trees, nice waterfall water features, you might say, coming from the storm runoff up on Church Street. So I don't want to see that change. I don't want to see beer cans, cigarette butts, and paper coming down there from the above. I also cannot tell you how bad that traffic is getting. What happens is, for example, I went to Lowe's the other day. Excuse me, I have allergies. Went to Lowe's the other day at Nolansville Pike. So I left the house about 9:15. I drive up to Old Hickory, and I went east to Nolansville Pike. It was solid all the way to Lowe's. That's about, I don't know how far, ten miles, solid traffic. So what happens is, these are people who want to turn south on I-65. They don't go to the intersection of I-65. They turn left on Cloverland and go south right past the house. So that's why the traffic is so bad. So I urge you to decline this. It doesn't make sense on a number of counts. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brenda Martin, and I live at 5680 and 5672 on Cloverland. Again, my husband Paul Ryder just spoke to you. We're opposed to this development because it does conflict with the character of the neighborhood, the neighborhood on Cloverland. The houses all there were and built in the 1940s, 1950s. And as Paul said, we've remodeled our home, and we really enjoy being there. We bought it from a couple that had lived there for twenty-seven years, and they'd taken great care of the property. We love the area. It's very convenient to our work. It's very convenient to all the other things around on Franklin Road. But when we come home to our residential, to that residential subdivision, it's very peaceful, and we really enjoy that part of living there, and that's why we purchased the home several years ago. The character of the neighborhood is such that the neighbors all know each other. There's walking areas on the Valley View side, not on Church. There's no sidewalks on Church. But we still are able to enjoy a neighborhood atmosphere because of the way the houses are laid out. They are set back from the road, and it does, is a very beautiful, peaceful neighborhood. My concern is, as you can see, there's a heavy population of people that will just be in that corner. If you, even though some of that is garage, there's still cars, there's people to turn in and out. And of course, like everyone else said, the traffic. You really can't get out of our driveways in the morning. We have to leave for work. We work at Nissan, and it only is about an eight-minute drive if it's in our normal, in the normal path. But we have to leave at about 7:15 to get to work because if you leave after 7:15, you can't get out of the driveway. So it's not like we can't get there, but we can't even get out of the driveway. I do appreciate the opportunity to address the council, and it would be my hope that you would oppose this decision and entertain a smaller density.
Thank you.
Well, councilman, my name's John Sherlock. I live at 5613 Valley View Road. There's a couple of things I just wanted to discuss. One is all the current development that's happening all around us. We have the Life Point that's going up right across the street that's not fully open yet. And right behind there, there's several hundred units that Seven Springs is going to be open. One lady just mentioned earlier, right there behind Harris Teeter, I think it was close to three hundred-plus units opening there. A mile down from this proposed development, they have a monastery school. There's thirty units going in there. So we have all this development all around us, and we don't fully understand the impact that it's going to have on the traffic right now. And I don't really understand why we would just add to the problem, you know, just to kind of poke the bear. So I would recommend to the council that we leave our street zone low-density as a buffer for right now to let the dust settle, see where all this traffic is going to go, how it's going to affect us. I think as of right now, on Cloverland, we average about eighteen thousand cars a day, and I think that two-lane highway is only rated for about twelve thousand cars a day. Also, the school systems. My son was in fourth grade last year at Granbury Elementary. As it was right now, we had several modular units. The school's not big enough, the house, all the kids that are coming in. And then we only have one high school in the area, John Overton, which is also extremely crowded at this point, too. So when we're talking about all this development coming around, that's up to, including this, would be close to about eight hundred units that are not fully open yet. And I just urge the council to look at the infrastructure, the roads, the school systems before we give a head nod of approval to this massive development here on the corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is JP Robinson. I've lived in this area for forty-one years. I'm off in Cloverland Acres on Cloverland Place. We're not covering the same ground my neighbors have covered. There are periods of time on Cloverland Drive that the backup approaches three-quarters of a mile. That's ridiculous. The same occurs on Cloverland Drive approaching Old Hickory Boulevard. You are forced frequently out of my neighborhood to turn right at the risk of your own life. I don't own a dragster, so turning left is just, gets to be too much. The density is way too high for the neighborhood, and I'm not looking forward to seeing that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good afternoon. I am Diane Turner. I live at 5639 Valley View Road, which is a couple of properties from this proposal. I'm here to ask you to decline this proposal because, adding to what my neighbors have said, it is outside the land use policy that was agreed upon some years ago, that the neighbors who lived there at that time agreed upon, that those of us who've bought into that neighborhood, and I've been there now about eight years, relied upon when we purchased the property. It changes the character of our neighborhood. There is a clear boundary to the west of this property that is multifamily units, many multifamily units. Our neighborhood is low to mid-density. It is somewhere in the neighborhood of four, one to four, single-family individual structures on lots. My lot is a little over an acre. I have one house on it. These structures are freestanding structures. They're not townhomes. They're not condominiums. They, this particular development represents, in my view, a clear intrusion into what is single-family, singlestructure homes. East of Cloverland, approximately a mile, there is a new development at the monastery school. Someone mentioned it, and I believe that's a density of about three homes per acre. A little further on, there's a development at Pisgah, again, at three per acre. And I ask you to reject this proposal in favor of something more compatible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John York. I live at 5660 Valley View Road, and once lived in the townhomes of Fredericksburg, and I have a son and daughter-in-law who now live in those apartments that are just to the west of this proposed development. And just as an aside, if you were actually going to vote on putting those same apartments there today, I would urge you to vote no on that because trying to get in and out of there to see my grandchild is nearly impossible, especially during rush hour. You can only turn right, which is the opposite direction I need to go to get to my house. And that's just for what it's worth. Traffic, as everyone else has already told you and as you already knew, is terrible on that street, particularly at rush hour times. If I understand correctly, what could be done on here on these seventeen-point-five acres now is something like duplexes, which would be somewhere around thirty-five units. And it seems to me somewhere between thirty-five and sixty units is far more appropriate for density issues. I don't know how they're going to get in and out of these places anyway, given where those access roads are going to be on Church Street with the current traffic, even if they do some improvement in that intersection. So I would urge you to vote no on this proposal.
Thank you.
This gentleman had minutes left over, and that other fellow had a minute. Can I speak longer than two minutes? Because they didn't.
You've got two minutes.
What?
You've got two minutes.
I'm running. I'm a former councilman, and I never did go before this distinguished body very often because my district was all built out. I live up in Cloverland Hall at the corner of Old Hickory Boulevard in Cloverland. My problem is density because you can't get out of our development in the morning or in the afternoon. It's just terrible on those streets. Everybody's talked to you about that. We know these people that have been here that want to sell their property. I'd like to sell mine, too. The black fellow got a nice place there. I know exactly where he lives. Lady across the street spoke about crime and so forth. Big estate up there. I think someday will be development. We don't know about any crime in the neighborhood. We think the density is too high. I wrote all you a letter, and I made a mistake. I said it ought to be four per acre, and I said five. Four per acre, I would be for that. A lot of these people don't want anything on the property. Y'all know we've got to put something on there. So I just ask you to consider, all these people who have spoken, and there's a lot more that haven't spoken, change the density or reject this plan and maybe go with something around four per acre. Some people won't even want that, but I think that might fly. I realize that property is very valuable, but I just don't think we need to change the neighborhood. One of the people spoke also, talking about the four units facing Cloverland, and a gentleman spoke about, he's got a four-acre lot over there. Those four houses of five, whatever it was, five, don't fit the neighborhood at all. They just don't fit the neighborhood at all. So please, please consider the interest of the neighbors, the people that live in the area, and either defer this or reject it entirely. Thank you a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you've got one minute for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. I live at 36 Old Club Court. I urge you to approve this today. There's been two issues raised. One is the issue of density, the other is product type. If you heard from the staff and you've heard the presentation here, the most contiguous piece of property here is eighteen units an acre, and it's rental. This certain proposal began with a proposal by my client for eighteen units an acre. It's evolved. The councilman said, "We've had four neighborhood meetings. We've had an untold number of meetings with the staff. The plans continue to evolve, now to the point of a proposal of six-point-seven units per acre with fee simple ownership." There's been significant change. With respect to my client's proposal, they're willing to suggest private roads. People have commented about access to Cloverland. There is no access from this project to Cloverland, period. So with respect to the two issues, density and product type, density was not of significant pushback by the staff. Product type, you need to decide. I'd like to ask in closing, a number of people that are supportive here, to raise their Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing closed. Everyone in favor or opposed, raise your hand. Everyone in favor or opposed, raise your hand. Okay. Public hearing is closed. The commissioners can ask questions if they like. Otherwise, there'll be no comments from the audience. Greg, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I want to say I appreciate our young kids going to debate. I was on the debate team back when I was in school, so I do appreciate that, and I appreciate his public involvement. That's really great. I just wanted to point that out. My first question, a few questions. My first question is, I heard a lot about traffic. So is there a traffic study that's required of the site? Would it increase the grades or decrease the grades on Church and Cloverland and all the streets that were mentioned?
Good evening. Jonathan Haneket, I'm with the Department of Public Works. There was a traffic study that was submitted with this development that looked at offsetting what this development would generate, and what offsets would need to be done to mitigate the additional traffic created. As part of the study that was conducted, there was improvements recommended that's going to be required primarily at the intersection of Cloverland Church, where we have signal modifications. There's going to be additional capacity added to it with increasing storage for vehicles, trying to get a little more traffic through. But the traffic study was conducted to look at the offset what this development would create.
I heard about turning left on a particular street, which is that going to be addressed?
The Church Street, I don't have the, there's TDOT traffic counts that, there's count stations throughout the county. Church Street is one of our streets that has increased in traffic over the years. It's probably, to guess, probably about 15,000 on an average daily basis for trip traffic along Church. There is an existing center turn lane on Church Street that could act as a, to allow for turning movements, but it's one of our streets that has had an increase in traffic over the years.
Okay. Just a note from your staff report, this would be roughly generate about 845 trips, which is a net gain of about 624 over what it could develop under the current zoning, not what it is. So, under the current zoning, how many trips would that be? Two-hundred-and-twenty-one. If it developed fully out, it's all duplexes on our 40 lots. And then, okay. And then, all right. Okay. I think that answers my traffic question. The other question was density. And I guess the question that I have is, you talked a lot about transition, and that is why the staff report recommended disapproval. During that, I guess part of that transition is density? Is that, or is that not correct? Or what? Tell me more about that.
We didn't really focus on density. I mean, density could be appropriate with the appropriate design. Again, we're looking at, you do have higher density to the west with the apartment complex, but then you have a pocket of larger lots with deep setbacks on Cloverland and behind the property, as well as some lots going towards Church Street. So the transition that's being provided, as you look and you go to, towards the intersection of Cloverland, you have a product that is more of a, I would say, more of an urban design of townhomes that attach units, which don't really fit in as far as with the little pocket area of larger lots. So that's, those type issues are a primary issue, is how that transitions from that area from the west to the east.
Okay. I appreciate that. That's all the questions that I have. I would like to hear from the other commissioners, but the transition seems to be a little off for me as well. I'm not sure that it's exactly density, but I would like to hear what the other commissioners have to say as well.
Stuart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the staff recommendation has been disapproval as inconsistent with the land use policy. And that remains after today, after what we've heard today.
Right.
So we obviously shouldn't be approving it, absent a change. I realize we could ask the staff to draft a change, but the fact that we don't have it before us, and that its staff contends that it's inconsistent with the land use policy, is sort of dispositive of the issue for me.
Yeah, let me try and address that, too, because it's not simply a change in the policy. It's the fact that this product type and this design and this location doesn't meet the conditions of the policy. So you could become consistent with it with a different product type and a different design.
And not, you agree with what's been said, that it's not exactly density that has the staff recommendation negative. Having to do, and part of, so the transition from multifamily to single-family remains a major part of it. I do think it's a sophisticated group of folks here who realize we're going to see more density on this land, and they mostly bought areas in an area, and were part of increasing the density at one point. So it's not, I don't see it as a matter exactly of this density, although I can understand their suggestions that this is way too much. I just think it's a pretty simple issue about our staff's recommendation having to do with the policy. So I will be supporting the staff recommendation.
Senator.
I agree with the staff's assessment, and as well as Councilman Clifton, but I also think that, you know, I know we talk about infill and density, and we generally are supportive of increasing intensity and density. But I do think there are some places in our county where, and we can probably point the finger back to this body, maybe not these people, but this body and maybe the council's past, that we've, we just haven't built the infrastructure to handle the development. And I've experienced, I grew up not far, not too far from here, and have family in the area, and still, and have experienced the growth of traffic along Church Street and Old Hickory Boulevard, which frankly, I'm glad I don't live out there because of it. But, and so, you know, there's a point at which, you know, we've got to make better connections, create more release valves, and with each development that comes along that doesn't do that, like this one, we're not going to be helping the problem. I'm curious, with the traffic impact studies, whether these go out, I'm thinking of the 600 or so more cars or trips a day, the impact that that's going to have on Old Hickory Boulevard and Church Street, not just the most immediate area. I'm curious how Public Works sees this area, you know, at the level of service that it's currently, you know, on Church Street and...
I'm not able to answer that. I'd have to defer to one of our traffic engineers in our department, but as far as the traffic study does look at this area, there would have been, Church Street would have been analyzed as part of the traffic study. And then, that's where they, part of the analysis, that's where they come up. In this case, it was making improvements to the signalized intersection, which increased capacity, able to get more vehicles through to offset this development. So as part of that engineering analysis, there was recommendations made out of it, and part of the study included Church Street as well.
Do you know if the study included intersections of Old Hickory Boulevard, that far away, and Wilson Pike, and some of the other nearby sort of pinch points?
I don't, I can't recall now when it was reviewed by our traffic engineer. I didn't review the study. I can't recall that. I do know they looked at it, Cloverland Church, the access points, but I don't believe they went that far out on the study.
Thank you. That's all.
Moving. Going through the staff's report, it looks like, at least from the staff's perspective, there's not only a problem with the land use policy, but there's also issues with the Public Works and Stormwater approval. Can we talk about that a little bit?
On your staff report, it's return for corrections, which basically means that there are technical details that need to be fixed on the plan. I do have someone here from Stormwater, and that can address if they've taken care of these. I know there were some plans submitted to Stormwater electronically today, so I'll let Stormwater answer that question if they've corrected, and they're okay with the plans, and I'll let Public Works also answer that, because they may have submitted plans to them as well today.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Steve Missou of Metro Stormwater. The plans we got earlier today, I haven't really reviewed yet, but I guess in a nutshell, they did get a variance approved for a preliminary hearing. So while, as weird as it may sound, this is actually not a stream, but there is floodway there. So there's a floodway buffer associated with it, and they got a variance to disturb some of the floodway. So they asked for about four different items, and they got approval for one of them, which was probably the biggest one. And the other three items could probably be manipulated and adjusted with the plan.
So some of the neighbors today, and also in letters that were sent to us, talked about flooding and how this development would impact their flooding problems. Can you speak to a little bit about that?
Well, this is in the Mill Creek watershed. It's actually in Seven Mile, which strains to Mill Creek. And this is probably as uppermost as you could get. Right on the other side of Church Street is the top of the hill where Seven Mile Creek starts. So at the top of the basin is where detention is most useful. So part of the variance that they were applying for was to do in-channel detention, which that didn't get approved, so they are proposing offline detention. So being at the topmost of the basin, detention is very critical over here, and we'll make sure that they design it to the latest and greatest regulation. As far as flooding, you know, it's, I've heard areas that do flood over here, and I know there are areas that don't flood over here. I know the, there's a pipe under Church Street that sometimes it gets a little bit flooded. We'll try to work with the developer if this goes through to, you know, possibly upsize that pipe upstream and help the water go through there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Andre.
Well, conceptually, there's some things I'd like to point out that I think you're really positive, just to finally get, start to see mixed product type and mixed ages, ideas of townhomes, all these different things are something that I've been looking for for developers. And so that, that part I like. I think also in the conceptual part of the conversation, all of this traffic discussion, I hope everybody who's concerned about traffic is going to go to the Nashville Next meetings and talk about transit, because this is all argument for that. I feel like the, I know that the applicant's points were that they think, they were showing us reasons that they thought it did fit our policy, and the staff says it doesn't. So I think we need to pay attention to how we feel about that in our discussion. I wondered what policy, you know, if we were, this whole, this seems like a pocket, I guess. And we've talked about pockets in other areas where we've wanted to protect certain pockets while there's development going on around. I think the infrastructure question you all debated is important. I think that this could be a lower-density development and still get plenty of return if some of the product design were different, the type, protecting the trees, tucking things in, maybe separating units so that they could have more light, more air, and address the topography, fit on the topography better, maybe make more of a feature out of the water area, have a pond if you have to detain, use detention. I mean, I think there are ways to do this site that could give it a quality of life for the people who are buying it, and maybe keep with, even though it has less density. So I don't think if it gets reshaped, it would kill it. But I think at this level, it's not going to match what's there in that area.
Jessica.
I think there's been a lot of good questions asked by my fellow commissioners, and some pretty good points raised. I'm definitely very aware of the traffic argument. I realize that's just one piece of it, but having driven around that site a bit this week, I can certainly recognize that there are some challenges. And I think putting, you know, having all of, I recognize all of the roadway coming in off Church Street is an attempt to kind of keep it clustered on the higher, on the higher-traffic area, but I can imagine that that's, I can certainly see that that's going to be a major challenge for the residents in that area. I also agree with the concern that it's, we don't find it consistent with the land use policy. I think that raises a pretty big red flag to me. And I agree that we should see some kind of mixed-use development, and I definitely applaud that that's a good approach for this area. But I think that the design, you know, just to me, does, it does seem like it's going to be a real challenge for that area, and I could see supporting a much lower-density project.
I agree with everything that the, mostly the other commissioners have mentioned thus far, and probably the, from a larger, bigger-picture standpoint, one of the things that I do believe that we need to look at as a city, and that's why I'm glad the Nashville Next program is indeed going on, but from a policy standpoint, what we're finding is that we're creating opportunities for more development, but with respect to the funding for the infrastructure, we're lagging way behind. And that is just something that concerns me, because I live in this area, and when it takes me 40 minutes to 45 minutes to drive to work, which is four miles from my house, that causes me major concern. I travel this road every day. And so as we move forward as a city, I do believe the larger policy issue is that how are we going to address greater density, more people, population growth, and infrastructure issues? But with that said, I am going to move that we accept staff's recommendation and disapprove this development.
Stuart.
Well, I wanted to discuss that, if you want to get a second.
Yeah, you've got a question. Do you need a second or none? Sorry. Now you can discuss.
If we disapprove this, of course, the proponents can take it to the council, and that would be up to a different body. It strikes me that this has been a particularly interesting debate, and some good points have been raised by other commissioners and by people out here. However, it's also true that, I mean, some of us have watched the work of the people who, the professionals who brought this proposal, and they're pretty talented. And if our message to them is something like what you've suggested with some significant changes, but something like what you've suggested needs some reshaping, then the question I have is, do we want to vote it up or down, knowing that the next set of developers may not be this engineering firm that knows what they're doing, and various others associated with it? So I'm just raising that before we vote on the motion to disapprove. I would wonder if I defer off to see if what we have said tonight can lead to a reshaping, as someone mentioned.
Just a response, and it's been pointed out, I think, that the applicant has worked through a number of redesigns. The issues that have been brought up by staff now are brought up then. It's not to say they couldn't. They have been working on a plan that has focused primarily on certain building types that they build. And I think they've done a very, probably as good a job as they can do with the building types they have. Unless they're going to do different building types, they're probably not going to be able to overcome the objections that staff has raised all along.
Right. But they were, that's without knowing that we would be crazy enough to agree with staff. I mean, they might, I don't know.
I think probably that the developer has heard the issues, and probably if we deferred this, a couple of meetings, give them a chance to decide whether they want to make the changes that they've heard as far as density and product type. I'll call for the motion. If we got a motion, a second, I'll call for that, and we vote on it. But I'd like to ask if the one who made the second would withdraw.
if the one made the second would withdraw and allow the, the second and the motion maker, they would rescind that and give us an opportunity to defer it. Meeting, two meetings, three meetings, and definitely whatever, to give them an opportunity to decide if they want to go back to the neighbors and try to work something out and come back with something that's compatible and to make the change to the land use policy. Hunter.
I think I second it. I'm not necessarily opposed to a deferral. I'm curious, if we were to turn it down, I think the councilmen spoke in opposition to this. So, would the, if we turned it, if we disapproved it tonight, the councilman didn't take it forward to the council as is, they would have the opportunity to come back to us anyways. Is that correct? So, whether we defer or we disapprove it tonight, this might not make a difference necessarily.
Mr. Chairman, we were just checking on that in anticipation of the question. The code holds that if, in fact, the Metro Council votes down a project like this, once it goes to council, then it would create a one-year barrier for anyone to bring the same or substantially the same project back through planning. Merely, having the planning commission either vote to disapprove or not give its recommendation before it goes to council would not automatically preclude the applicant from coming back with an amended version of their application to planning, if that answers the question.
If we turn it down, they come back, and they come back in for a, another plan, is another application fee, and what is that amount?
Yeah, I think there would be another application fee. I think, one, if you're considering a deferral, you probably ought to ask the applicant if that's what they want, because they have discussed this, I mean, this has been going on for probably over a year now.
Let me just ask them, if the applicant wanted to defer, you want us to vote on that?
Mr. Chairman, we would agree to a deferral. I think a two-time deferral probably makes sense. I've heard the comments. My clients heard those. To start from scratch on a new proposal would be significantly a downside to my client. We've heard the neighbors, we've heard the comments up here. It's, it's density and it's product, and we've heard that. We'd like to see if we can get that done without starting from scratch, so we would appreciate the opportunity for the deferral, and we'd meet with the neighbors again before we came back here. We'd ask that strongly.
Thank you.
I'll withdraw my second. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, here's our motion to defer.
I'll move to defer.
Second.
Motion, second to defer. Greg?
Just two meetings.
It's what?
Two meetings.
Two, two meetings sufficient. We do it indefinitely. You've probably got a lot of work to do to, we defer two meetings, and then if you would need longer, you can work with the staff on that. There's motion, second to defer two meetings. All in favor, I?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it is deferred.
Mr. Chairman, there was an informal question raised. That doesn't mean we necessarily will be ready to vote on it, because they brought another one. The opponents can, can move for another deferral if they're not properly prepared.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Hunter, you have your thing. Mr. Stark?
I actually do. Sorry. I asked...
You're out of order.
Yeah.
Terrible. I got a letter from him saying that the density ought to be found, it's 6.7, so I was going to go look at the density. Anyway. What do you think we did? Passed it? Okay, go ahead, Hunter. Hey, ones in the audience, if you would take a conversation outside so we can continue the meeting.
I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention to the commission that, I think a couple of meetings ago, I had mentioned that I was wanting to get together with the staff and with the staff of the Historic Commission. And we did that with Doug and Carrie and maybe others from planning, and Robin and Tim from Historic. And I asked them to come and talk to me about some of the issues that we as a commission, and especially the Historic Commission, have been struggling with, with infill development, especially in single-family neighborhoods. And so, I was able to get my arms around it a little better. I'm still not sure I'm fully, I mean, I don't think we got through our full list of items, but we know there's some legislation that's gone through recently and some legislation that's going through. Ultimately, I think it's probably going to be a good idea to have a workshop with both commissions or maybe even a workshop together, potentially. So, I just wanted to report that back.
Directors.
Just a couple of things highlighting from the director's report. The, as we mentioned earlier, the futures evaluation portion of the Nashville Next project ends on September 15th, so we encourage you to get involved. We will be live on the green on September 5th there. I would note, and this is coming up later, but we have been able to find some training opportunities specifically for planning commissioners that APA is putting on. They really come up in February and April of next year, but they're geared specifically for planning commissioners, so we'll, we'll highlight those later as, as the time gets more appropriate, so.
I had a question that's relevant to that last project. Oh, sorry. I had a question relevant to the last project. Is there any effort to have a cumulative sense of all of these projects going in and what traffic impact all of these projects together are going to have? Because with what was raised, I mean, 118 units isn't going to make or break the traffic counts, but if you have 118 plus 300 plus 40, all of this together, to me, I just would like to have a picture of what this all means.
And it's interesting, because there is another neighborhood going in further up Cloverland, and to be honest with you, once you look at that, and it's within probably a mile of that, this area in question, once you look at that, plus what they're proposing here, you're looking at some major potential impacts there.
I think that, yeah, staff can, can look at that. We, we, at one point, we actually provided the commission, when we did these analyses, of approved but unbilled projects in the area, and we can, we can, we can do that. And we can touch base with the city of Brentwood and Williamson County to see what information they would have on projects they've approved.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Well, one was, is that the issue of simultaneous developments across county lines but within a mile or two of each other? Is that, is that the one you were mentioning?
Well, there are actually two. You have one that's going on in Brentwood, but additionally, one that's going on in Davidson County closer to the...
So, all of that, yeah. Wow.